Isani Committee of a whole meeting for Tuesday, July 19th. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Any public comment at this time? No public comment, let's move on to the committee meeting items. E1, Isani indoor arena restroom request.
Hi, so yeah, we got a request from Rummer BMX concerning the bathrooms in the warming house area inside the Isani indoor arena. So it sounds like there's been issues with vandalism in the bathroom, as well as it not getting cleaned properly all the time. So they're wanting to take over use of the bathroom and the warming house area for storage and other stuff that they need inside. Yeah, other things with that was the city was discussing, well, if we gave up the warming house, we'd need to figure out a different solution for the skating rink. So trying to find some shed or something that we can bring to the park during the winter months and remove during the summer months. And then just figuring out since we're gonna be, if we'd vacate the indoor arena altogether, it might be more beneficial if the city and Rummer BMX kind of work together and maybe sell it to Rummer BMX. And Mike had a lot more information on that.
So my question, I'll look at the chief, we have cameras out there, right?
As of recently, I want to say in the last two months, month-ish, yes. And prior to that, we did not, and I didn't go back and pull our records, but we had multiple criminal damage to property, whether it was actually like damaging the soap dispensers like they do, or just throwing toilet paper and garbage everywhere. But even with that, I mean, now we have cameras there, I think the last one, they did quite a bit of damage. Ceiling tiles, soap dispensers ripped off the wall, all the toilet paper splattered all over the place. So we had that, and we'd had one other issue after that as well. So we did identify those kids, but still, they're going in there while nobody else is there. That one was during the day, we had some at nights. I know that my concern is having a place that's open and it's supposed to be on timed locks, but you know, in evenings or different hours.
I can, I can say that I went there at 12:45, 1 o'clock in the morning. I was on my way home from an event and they were not locked.
I asked some of our officers what they're observing. Their thought is there's more kids hanging out in those bathrooms, maybe not vandalizing it, but hanging out, than the three that I talked to that work patrol, they said none of them have actually seen people use them, other than the kids that are hanging out there and using them for a place to hang out. Everybody knows that it's open, you know, every day, that they can go in there, out of sight, out of mind, and do whatever they do.
So you said you had cameras for the past month or two?
Yep, it just catches who goes in and out.
So did you see anybody beside, I mean, have you seen a mother changing their child go in there? I mean, have you seen anybody utilizing besides kids?
The few times that I've went through and looked through and tried to find like actual, we had incidents over there, no, we didn't see that. Now, that was granted, looking at one particular day each time, and all I saw was the, you know, it was easy to find, wait for the kids to go in there, and then those are the ones you're trying to locate and figure out where they are.
I wouldn't be opposed to giving the bathroom to them. Maybe not the warming house yet, but the bathroom, let them take it over. And then...
How would you suggest though that we do that come warming house use time?
Well, they're separate doors.
I don't know, I've never been there.
Yeah, they're separate doors. What, is there a door for the warming house and a separate door for the bathrooms?
The extent that I went was to pull on the door to see if I could get in at 12:45 in the morning, and I could, so.
Into the bathroom?
Yeah, but I haven't done the warming house thing, so I don't know.
That probably has been locked since winter, I would imagine. But you know, and then in the winter, the ice skating rink is close enough for them to utilize that, then open it back up for winter use.
So...
Until we come up with something different for the ice skaters.
Your thought would be let BMX take it over for cleanliness?
Yep.
There's a footprint in the, I was told by a resident, just today as a matter of fact, there's a footprint in there that is so dusty. Nobody's had to clean that bathroom in weeks, if not months. I said, I don't know, I haven't been in it. I just pulled on the door and knew I could get in it and I walked away.
Chief seems to have the most knowledge, do you think something needs to be done?
Well, I think that the issue you have is even though they're open for public bathrooms, the only few people that know that they're public bathrooms are the people we don't want in there.
Yeah, correct.
If you went to Bluebird Park, you'd have no idea there's bathrooms over there.
No.
So the only people that know the bathrooms are open are people that are going there to hang out.
Yep.
And there's gonna be randomly a handful of people that might actually use it as a bathroom, but I don't know if any of you would even know there's a bathroom that's open there every day. So with that being said, we've had it that way for how long, nobody knows about it.
From day one?
Day one, nobody knows about it, so I think the negatives are outweighing the positives on that. As far as our response, I mean, the city's, I know Matt gave me the number on the last damage, I can't remember what it was, it was a couple hundred dollars in damage, I think is what we came up with with staff time and stuff. You know, that was just that last time, and there's been times before that as well. Those last ones that we actually had six kids in there, and they were there for, I want to say hour and a half, two hours? Is how long they were hanging out there and damaging those bathrooms.
So how does it work during, you know, I know they practice at night, let's say in the fall. How's it work public use then? I mean, if I was gonna go down there and watch a practice and I just wanted to use the bathroom, are they talking about...
You can get in there from inside the building.
But my question is, are they gonna regulate this enough where if I come watch, I can't go use the bathroom?
No, what they would do is they would have the bathrooms open during their events. So then they would be responsible to lock and unlock those bathrooms.
Clean, stock.
And cleaning them and stocking them and, you know, everything. They would be responsible for it. And then we just don't let the public use the restroom anymore, it's basically for BMX events only. But then my next question was, what do we do come winter?
Was the ice rink right there on the grass?
It used to be, but it's not anymore, right? Or Jordan's over here, right?
It's quite a walk, I think, from the map.
Who in their right minds is gonna use that?
It's still over kind of through, on the other side of the pine trees, right?
Yeah, right off the parking lot.
So...
When you say use the bathroom, they're getting off the ice, taking their skates off, going over there? I mean, I would just walk through the snow myself.
Well, I don't know how many people actually use it, I think most people would just go to their vehicle.
And I think the chief's right, I don't even think they know it's there.
Right, I agree with that, yeah. I used to use the public warming house all the time, and I...
Well, you can still have the door locked.
Yeah. That'd be our next thing, is they vandalize the locks. Councilman Lundin might be right, what if they break the lock?
Well, they could do that on the BMX main door, walking in too, if they wanted to, but...
Right, but if it's their event, how silly is it gonna look, somebody's got a crowbar during an event trying to break the lock?
Well, you got two doors that are locked. You got the interior door and the exterior door to that bathroom. They can have control over both locks, they can double lock it. So if they even break the lock to get in the bathroom, they still got another lock to break in to the BMX area. Oh, they do a lot in the summer. Events, practice, whatever, if people are out conjuring in the parking lot.
They'll go use that restroom.
They'll go right in that door to use the restroom. Especially if the garage doors are shut. Yeah, they go in and out of that door a lot.
I don't think we need to bolt it, but I think it should be in their realm of they lock it, they unlock it, they maintain it, they stock it.
I mean, they got, you got, they got, they got a security system. You know, if it was theirs, they could easily, I'm sure, add on to the security system to cover that exterior door.
You're the representative from BMX, correct? Okay, so could you add on to that possibly? So if this was totally in your realm, there would be no issues with it whatsoever? I like it.
I'm all for turning it over to the BMX.
I am too.
It's attached to their building, and the day they take over that building, it's theirs, and we don't have to deal with it. I don't think, outdoor skating rink, if it is a problem for bathrooms, then let's go rent some Jimmy Johns and put them out there.
And I was also gonna bring that up, probably we're gonna want one over by the dog park and archery range anyway.
Yeah, we probably won't win there anyway.
Yeah.
So let's just, in my opinion, let's turn it over to the BMX, it's their kit and they wanna deal with it, fine. If we have to have restrooms by the ice skating rink, let's put a Jimmy John's.
I think it's a good idea.
And then we just gotta figure warming house issue. We decide we can come up with something different that'll actually be right next to the general rink, and give that to them too.
We can put a shed on sleds.
That would, you know, that, that I would leave to Mr. Sylvester, but he's gotta move that thing around, then he can deal with it.
That's the only unfortunate thing, another thing you gotta do, man.
You could put, you know, one of those tough sheds or one of those things from, you know, Northern Landscaping. On skids, so you just pick it up with the loader.
Or even put them on to get some of those axles for like drop down fish houses.
Skids, yeah, sled, sled.
Wheels, and you just take the wheels off when it's sitting there.
When you move it though, make sure no one's inside.
Would we, I mean, if, if we turn both items over to them now, will we have money in the budget to come up with something? To get us by through a winter for a warming house, Mike?
Yeah, we could probably come up with something.
I'd say then...
You know, baseline, baseline, basic shed, you know.
Couple grand.
Two, two thousand, you know, maybe three or four if you're really getting something nice, but yeah, after that, it'd just be getting it warm.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't get nothing nice because it's gonna get vandalized anyway, so.
Yeah, potentially.
Potentially, sorry to be negative, but it happens.
Maybe we could get the school, if they get back construction trades, they could build us one.
There you go.
That'd be awesome.
I mean, it's too late for them to plan it now, but we'd have to do something in between, but I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Sylvester always could find something for a shed someplace.
We got Scott MacGyver down there.
Talk to Northern Landscaping, maybe they'll give us a deal if we put a sign on there or something.
They don't own those?
No, I know, but they...
But they, they don't have any regulatory price on it, that's whatever they get, that's what they do.
But they do, they, I would imagine they do get something.
Give Scott MacGyver a toothpick and a piece of paper, he'll build something.
You know, and then they can use the warming house.
Mayor, council, one thing we could do is we could go through this for a season without it, and see what the public are asking for, to see if they want it. Because I don't believe from my experience, obviously I don't drive by it every day like I used to, but there weren't people using it because they had to take their skates off to get there, because we didn't put the mats down because of the expense of the mats, plus of vandalism.
And we really didn't get any pushback on that either. So you might be right, Ms. Wood, we, we might, they might not say a word.
Back in the day previous...
Some benches?
Well, we put, we do put benches out there, but prior to nine and a half years ago, there used to be a warming house that was actually staffed back in the day, and it was a team effort with the Cambridge Isani Hockey Association.
Wasn't that like a construction trailer or something?
I didn't see pictures of it, but, yeah. But there are other cities, like in Homelaka does, like the tough, not the tough shed, but like the Amish sheds that you see for sale, for sale at like the landscaping companies. They use that for their warming houses and put mats down and stuff like that, but maybe we could see what the interest is first.
You know, there again, we don't buy anything now, we could always approach the school and say, hey, we'd like you to build us warming house, on wheels, that we can move, so, and they'll do it.
Or either one of those portable office, construction office trailers?
I'm not sure if that'd be allowed.
The heat, because it will be temporary for the winter, and it's already got a heating system in it.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the last time we had the trailer, it was a construction trailer when it was manned, it was a construction trailer.
Yeah.
Parked right at the edge of the concrete, I think it was right on the bike path there. It's all say skate park, because that's where the rink used to be, that's where it was, and it was a construction trailer.
And it could be even something that we could just rent seasonally, I know there's places that...
So, let's do this, that's, I mean, we're all in agreeance that BMX should be handed this bathroom. And maybe we could brainstorm some ideas, do our homework and come back to the warming house thing at a later time, but I think we're in agreeance that the restroom should definitely be given to BMX.
Just give them the keys for both doors.
Give them the keys and have at her.
So I think that to make it official, it should go through council, because I believe the agreement does state who gets the use over what areas, which would include the restroom facility. So I think that we would have...
Do we need to put an amendment onto their agreement or anything?
Yeah, or a revision or something, I think that we should look through that and then have it formally go through council.
Okay.
Can we temporarily just give it to them now?
If you want to give it to them now, my recommendation would be to add it as a consent item to tonight's council meeting, so they actually can go to vote for formal action, and then staff can work on it after the fact.
I'm okay with that, just so they can get going on it earlier with the...
Okay, we'll add it to the agenda then.
State finals and stuff like that, big events coming up.
Sure.
There you go. Sound good to you, sir? Awesome. Let's move on to E2, then, the rental inspection timeline.
Mayor, could I, why don't we have him present? Could we also just ask the question if there's any interest from the Rummer BMX Association of potentially looking at taking over ownership of the whole facility anytime? Has that ever been talked about by the board?
Yeah, we talked about it a couple of years ago, actually, on the board.
I think I, I think I pushed this issue two years ago, or I shouldn't say pushed, I asked. Sooner the better.
So, so then would the council like me to pursue that?
I would like you to.
And at least just see where it goes.
Maybe have them discuss it at the next board meeting.
Yeah.
And then, then you go ahead and meet with them and see what...
I think it could be very beneficial for the organization, plus there's some added benefits to not having all the caveats of what you can't do, that might be beneficial for the board to discuss.
I think you guys do a phenomenal job over there, so why not just hand you the keys and tell you to go hard at her and...
Yeah, I think, I think there are, I think, I think there are a lot of scenarios where the city comes out better off and BMX comes out better off.
There is, there is, there is that issue of the parking lot.
Yeah.
So the one, the one parking lot to the west is already on that parcel, so that's already been...
But there was, but there, but there was a deal with the lease on the parking lot, because they opted not to have the parking lot and the city paid for it upfront. That's why we were always having the, if you pay, we get X amount of dollars to help try to recover the cost of that parking lot. And that's why it was like 70/30, or 70/40, whatever, 70/30.
Couldn't we work that in the purchase price?
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because that's always been the issue.
Yeah, city gets their money back, work it in the purchase price, we move forward.
And then the matter of the, then we would probably still have to have some type of an agreement with the grass area.
For more parking area, because you guys seem to spill out every, every event.
Yeah, the...
That could still be done by especially van permit, just as it is now.
Yeah, especially van permit, we've got that solved.
Oh, the other question is, that being on, on park dedicated land, can we turn that and sell that to them without having too much problems?
Well, we'll have to look into those things as well.
Let Mike look into it.
Often, City Cambridge ran into that before more than once. Often, it's whatever money you get from the purchase of, say, Rummer BMX Association purchased that, that money would go back into another park, if it was park dedication.
Should go into Bluebird Park, all the stuff we want to do at Bluebird Park.
I'm not aware of any, that, those park dedication funds being utilized for that, but we...
Oh, I miss that.
But that was city-owned park dedicated land, and that's why this lease agreement set up was done this way because of that being park land.
I have confidence that if we turn it over to our staff, they'll find any snafu.
I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate here, because if we turn around and say, okay, you can purchase it, and all of a sudden they purchase it, all of a sudden, wait a minute, you can't do that, now we're, now we're fighting another battle.
Then come, you'll find it.
Make sure all our eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed before we really jump that bridge, that's all I'm saying.
Get it done. You okay, Ms. Wood? Okay, we'll move on to E2, then, the rental inspection timeline discussion.
Sounds good. That was easy.
Good evening, committee. Speaking with Matt Small and Ryan Saltis, who conduct the rental inspections annually for rental, all the rental units within the city of Isani. They have made a request to extend that deadline currently, they're due by December 31st.
Oh my god, that's actually me for once.
December 31st of each year, which ends up them conducting the inspections during January, February, and March, which just, they've run into some difficulties doing that because of snow, not being able to get into unplowed driveways, road, poor roads causing landlords who don't live within Isani reschedule over and over again. And also, March ends up being one of our busiest months to receive building permit applications, actually, because people are planning ahead, so that overlap makes it a little more difficult too. So they just have requested to extend it to either May 31st or June 1st of each year, just to allow for a little more leeway for them not to have to deal with all the issues related to weather, most specifically the unplowed driveways and the landlord rescheduling, because it just takes a lot of time to continue to do that. But while we're looking at the possibility of changing the expiration date, we'd also just like your consensus to look over this entire ordinance. I know we've been talking about going over the zoning code since I've started here, and so this would be our first two chapters that we would really dig deep in and make any necessary changes. Make the recommendation to you moving forward.
So my question would be, what are you gonna do if we did this change before this year? Are you gonna charge them a year and a half, because that's five months in?
We would have it be an extension of this year, so everybody...
So there's, in other words, so starting June 1st, whatever, just use June 1st as the example. June 1st to June 1st, so this last prior year, they get kind of a grandfathered five months. I'm all for it, let's do it.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good to me.
Great, we will be presenting it, bringing it forward to you with any other changes we recommend in the coming weeks.
Sounds good. We'll move on to E3, then, the police updates and discussion.
Mayor and Council, in my memo, I just went through some generic pieces of the puzzle on patrol operations for the police department, as well as some data that we've never extrapolated before. Just trying to lay out, so council has a pretty good handle on how our patrol functions on a day-to-day basis. You know, we have our shifts that start at 4:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. And we have 10 officers, and six of those officers are assigned to patrol, an SRO, investigator, lieutenant, and myself, chief. So with those six patrol, that leaves us with, we have two officers that work every night shift. Then when they're off, there's two other officers that work the opposite shift. We have one day officer that works a day shift and one opposite. So generically, there should be two officers on nights under an ideal world, one officer during the day. Now, they start at 4:00 a.m. by themselves, usually by 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 a.m., 8:00. There's myself, lieutenant, investigator come on during the day, so we utilize ourselves as a secondary officers. Where that makes sense, that practicality is, there's priority calls that we will go to with two officers. You know, you're in a higher situation, whether it's domestic assault calls or whatnot, where we're gonna go with two officers, not just one, it's not practical to go with one. So that's how we are kind of lined up with those six patrol officers, we have basically four night shifts and two day shift people. And just laid out our calls for services, lays out those calls for service from 2014 to 2021, and obviously there's a, almost a twofold increase in 14 to 2020 as far as the calls for service. So what I was looking at was the mutual aid, so those incidents where we only have one officer on, we have to request aid from, 95% of the time will be Isani County Sheriff's Office for an additional officer to come and assist. So in 2021, we did that at 39 occurrences. So that'd be times when we had only one officer on overnight, generally, be the overnights, and 39 times we had a request for assistance. So what does that mean as far as our ability to do that job? Our, in 2021, our response time for Isani Police Department to priority calls, which are your in-progress type of calls, was an average of 3.8 minutes. In that same timeframe, on those 39 requests, it took the sheriff's office 9.2, so close to 10 minutes. So that's, that's practically, that's how it affects our service, how it affects our citizens, is that timeframe. You're talking about four and a half minutes timeframe, and so some of those times, that's gonna be where officer is ready to go to that call, but is not going to that call until the county can show up, if that makes sense, because they might not go there until they get their second officer, because they're pulling the county from who knows where they may be. That was a new piece of data that took some time, we figured that out. The other thing that just wanted to lay out there, as far as under our current schedule, which gives us those two night officers and one day officer plus administrative staff, that works great. And I broke down on how much shifts that is, so every officer on this patrol side works 180 shifts, they were twelve-hour shifts and then one short shift, so 180 shifts per year out of 365 days. Vacation and sick is 16 shifts, and they're vacant for training for 10, so that's 26 shifts each officer does not work on patrol, whether it's vacation, sick time, or training, so it's 26. So we take 26 times 6, all six officers, that equates out to 156, so it's almost close to equivalent to one of those officers, if that makes sense. So throughout the year, even though we use those six to have that coverage, that minimum coverage, we're still actually short an officer with just those time on those six. So that was an interesting thing to actually visualize, to realize how much, even when it looks like we have double coverage on nights or whatnot, once you throw in the sick vacation and training time, it actually pulls them away quite a bit. So the charts in the back are just that data that I kind of laid out in that memo, as well as some historical call for service. I did lay out the, our time, like what time calls come in, which lays out why we pick the time and hours of our shifts. You know, right now, why we have 4:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. is usually when there's only one on, because that's usually one of the lowest priority call time loads. And our biggest priority time load is 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. That's the most critical calls that we get are usually between that hours. But we laid out those hours, and that's how we came up with that 4:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and the shift change and what we actually do. Like I said, it's just some different way of looking at it, as far as laying out how we actually run that patrol stuff. I know we've had discussions in the past on, you know, how many officers do we have on at a time? We'd like to say we have two officers on at night, but in practicality, just with those three, vacations, sick, and training, we can't, just because there's vacancies throughout that shift.
How many on, what do you, like an average, through, you know, probably busiest time is in the summer overnight, because people are out more, I don't know, you might know, ballpark, figure out how many nights. How many nights a year are, is there only one on? Would you have that number?
Well, I could extrapolate off of that, so you would have approximately 100 shifts? So it'll be 100 days out of 365, just with those 26 shifts that they're out for.
That's a year?
A year.
So chief, how do things change, like for the rodeo, or now we're doing the...
Well, I mean, we discussed the rodeo stuff last year a little bit at the, after the recap. I didn't do the recap yet with the, the numerics on that. I think last year we paid around $7,000 in overtime, just to staff that rodeo for that event, because we have the seven to eight thousand people and a lot of stuff going on. So that's, we're pulling in people on overtime shifts to do that, to cover those special event pieces.
That'd be the same for the...
That'd be the same for the county fair, then, too?
Well, the county fair, we're just doing as a contract, so we're, we're only put two officers up at the county fair.
And then do you pull in the volunteers, what do you call them, reserves or whatever?
We're not doing that for the county fair, but we do.
No, I mean for.
For the rodeo and the street dances, yes.
Wouldn't it be cheaper? First of all, let me ask, how are you doing on your hiring process?
Well, we've gone through, we've been vacant since January in one position. We went through two hiring processes. I think we went through a couple background investigations in each one and haven't hired anybody yet. We haven't reposted, I think the last one was about a month ago. I'm kind of debating whether we're gonna repost now or wait for the contract negotiations to come out in case we actually get something that's more enticing to recruit with, so.
And, and my question is, is do we hire one, or should we be hiring two right now?
Well, I mean, that's a question for the council to answer. I mean, what level of service do you want us to provide to your community?
I mean, I like the three point eight response time, but that nine point two, that's five minutes. You're leaving our city cop alone, and God only knows what could happen in five minutes.
Well, like, in some of those cases, in that timeframe, our officer might respond, and sometimes they might not, depending on the level of severity of that call. You know, if it's a significant call, where we might not send an officer in until that secondary officer shows up. So we have an Isani PD officer waiting, in essence, for five minutes to go to that. So I mean, like I said, it depends on what level of service we want to give to our community. I think we're starting to get to that size of community where our community probably expects more than what we're giving them. They're expecting us to be self-sufficient. I'm assuming that most residents in this community think that we are self-sufficient to provide our police services. However, just under our, we're not. And it won't be tomorrow or anytime soon, but it's something that we need to look at how to get there to be self-sufficient, because I do think that's the expectation. We try to do the best we can with what we have, and we do a great job. But it's, it's the nature of every police department of our size or anything that's not in Minneapolis. Well, you're in Minneapolis, you're the other case, where there's not enough officers to handle all the calls anyway, so there's response time. But it's the nature of every community when they start growing, is how do they get to whatever level? You know, with our staffing, just looking at staffing projections, they'll give a matrix, this is when we're adding them, but just with their scheduling. Once, wherever that point is in, in our future, when we add, we get to twelve officers or actually eight patrol. Like I was discussing this with the other staff, the matrix to actually go above that, the next one, so saying nine on patrol, we're gonna have to have something change, like something drastically changed, like a really increased, so it's gonna be stagnant there. That's, because once you get to that eight, because that's where you have two on, two four-night officers, four day officers, plus our ancillary stuff, we can fill in with that, there'd be a stagnant point. So that's, so, once we get to two, is kind of what we'll level off, whenever that point gets there. And we're gonna have to have a pretty good matrix to actually grow again after that.
Mr. Becker, we had, what do we, we had one on the docket now, and then one, is it twenty twenty-three, or when was the next one being hired?
Well, the one now is just replacing.
Right. And then we had another one, when?
So the staffing plan we approved in February was for a new hire in twenty twenty-four and then a second hire in twenty twenty-eight.
So we'd essentially have to wait two more years. Well, year, year and a half.
Yeah, we'd basically be planning that hire twelve months from now.
Any thoughts, gentlemen? Questions?
I think, I think Chief's doing, or the whole police department's doing a good job with what they have. So I appreciate that. You're doing a great job.
I got actually a comment on Sunday night, Sunday night, of Isani Police Department, how professional their attitudes are when they enter, you know. They pulled over, whatever he meant by that. Basically, when he comes in contact with you guys, he's very pleased on how your department handles themselves. That was kind of a good thing to hear.
I had somebody tell me the other day how that you guys will stop and put bike, stickers on a kid's bike, and he really appreciated, you know, that kind of stuff, too. So I think you guys are doing a, doing a good job, so.
Yeah, they seem to interact well with the community, just being at the street dance the other night. They were, they come through laughing and smiling and waving to everybody and talking to everybody, the two officers that were there. One was the lieutenant, I forget who the other one was. They do a good job, you know, interacting with the public, so I think that's important. You probably teach that as well, so.
I'm gonna put my two cents in here. This is, unfortunately, in our trying times in the last few years, criminal activity is moving further and further and further north. Some of you on this council probably won't agree with it, but I think we're gonna have to look at entertaining and putting another officer on sooner than later.
Oh, I would, I would agree with that.
And I, and I, and I think it's going to only get worse. With the way the economy is going right now on things, it's going to go to a point, there's gonna be more foreclosures, more people wanting to have rental properties, bringing different environmental people into the city. It's gonna happen, whether you like it or not, it's happening. You know, we had our first homicide in, in Isani area a couple of years ago. It's, and I've lived here for almost sixty years. It's the first time that's ever happened.
First one in forty years, if I'm correct, right, Chief?
So you can, we can do all you want and say all you want, pinch every penny you can. We're not changing those statistics. It's happening. You know, if it, if it has to be that we have to divert some funds or change, make some other changes, so be it, we're gonna have to. But I think our public safety is top priority one.
I would agree.
You know, you get more and more other things. I mean, Ms. Wood kind of knows what I'm referring to already, and that happens, that's just gonna be more calls, more officer time down. And it's, we can't afford to do that. I mean, people are already driving like they're nuts on these streets.
And we got a, quite a few events that happen throughout the entire year for a small town.
Yep.
Where a lot of officers are probably working overtime.
I think what we pay in overtime, we could afford one cop. And that's just statistically seeing the numbers.
But.
Or pretty darn close.
You'll never end overtime because of that reason. I mean, unfortunately, I hate to say this, you may have to, you may have to tell your officers, there are certain times you can't take time off.
We, we try not to do that because of retention piece, but we do. Unfortunately, we have.
You, unfortunately, you have to. I mean, I've talked to one of our officers that came up from Minneapolis. He loves it here. He took a hellacious pay cut to be here, and he loves it here.
So Chief, what is the, I thought I heard you say, we've gone through the hiring process twice and didn't find anybody. What is the, why are we not finding people? Is it?
We've already assessed it a little bit. I mean, that's the whole issue in law enforcement as well, you know, just the lack of.
Statewide.
To it. And trying to be competitive in the market when there's very few candidates, that's the name of the game. Trying to be competitive and standing out is challenging for, you know, a city the size of Isani to compete with fifty, sixty other people looking for officers type thing.
I think it's, it's a huge issue when the Minnesota cities has police on their, their cover.
And, I mean, my testament, my officers are willing to accept the fact we haven't hired anybody for those two hirings, because they realize they'd rather work with a really great officer than just a body to put in there. And even from my own standpoint, I'm not just gonna hire somebody that doesn't fit on how we need to run our department.
And he's, he's picky for the team, and rightfully so.
And I appreciate that, I mean.
And you have to be, because if you, if you have a well-oiled machine, you can't just throw a rusty nut in there and expect it to stay well-oiled. So you, it's, you have to be a fit with the people you have. And there is times that there's gonna be somebody within the department, company, city, whatever it be, that doesn't fit well with the other workers. And when you start having that drawdown on other workers, it creates a problem for that whole department, company, city, whatever. So they have to gel well together. I mean, that's just like you throw five guys out on a basketball court, and everyone wants to haul, be the ball hog. Your team ain't gonna win. They aren't gonna score. It's just not gonna happen.
You, you can't put a cowboy with officer-friendly. It just doesn't work that way.
It's, it, it just, you gotta have the right gel of people. But I, like I said, unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to start looking at what we can do. And I think, Mr. Becker, I can see his gears are grinding in his noggin already, what he can do. And, you know, I lean heavily on him, and I think he can figure out how we can do this without sacrificing too much elsewhere.
No pressure, right, Mike?
I think he lives for that.
Never no pressure.
I think he lives for that. I think this guy gets off on the fact that he can make this happen without dipping too deep in the pocket.
Well, I guess I ask my question just because I wanna know, you know, what do we need to do to attract? You know, you, you've tried twice, but we haven't attracted anybody. You know, I would, and maybe you haven't thought enough about it, but I would eventually like to hear from you. What, what does we as a council need to do to support you to get more people here?
We talked about that, though.
I know we've talked about it, but I just wanna know, have we, have we taken those steps, or?
We're waiting for the contract.
No, I get that, too, but I mean, is, you know, so, so that's the, that's the big sticking point, Chief, is?
I mean, I, I'm weighing the risk versus reward, you know, putting it out there. So the other problem I have is when you keep on posting on the same, there's only one place that are generically, that most people look for a job. If you see the same agency post on there, you're like, there must be some reason, you know, that they're posting on there a lot. Doesn't look as good. Because there's a marketing campaign even in that. So I'm hoping that, optimistic that the contract negotiations would be more lucrative to post those wages over what they are now. Because the other, the only other opportunity is, you know, start looking into what other agents they're doing is, you know, trying to do signing bonuses to hire officers.
That's what I was gonna say, do they, does anybody do that?
Oh, yeah, that's actually pretty common nowadays.
Yeah, it is, very common.
For government?
For even for police officers specifically. Like, when we look at them, I'm sure if you look on the poster right now, you're gonna see three, four, five of them. They're gonna have some kind of signing bonus within that agency, yes.
Hell, they're even, they're even offering to pay the training to bring people into law enforcement. Not, and it's not just here, I mean, it's nationwide. They're offering, hiring patrols, begging people to come in, and, and they'll pay their training and go all out for them. It's, you, you can't, when you can't find help, you have to go that. And unfortunately, that drives the rest of it like this. It just does.
It's a competitive job market.
It is. And like I said, the moral, the story of this whole memo, just laying out, so you guys understand, you know, what level of service we're giving at the current moment. We are not self-sufficient. I'm like advertising the fact that our police department's not self-sufficient, but the facts are the facts, is we are not self-sufficient. We, we cannot provide our service without the assistance of the county based on our current staffing levels. With that, even at our full staffing level, and hire this extra, or the one that we're vacant, we still, with that sick vacation and training time, we're still short generically, one officer to cover that minimum of two night from four to four, and the one from, the one officer from four AM to four PM with the administrative staff filling in. Which I think, right now, would be a perfect, you know, that's the perfect, that's why I have the schedule laid out that way, because it's the perfect storm to have those two on at night. However, once you equate those sick vacation and training hours, we're still an officer short to accomplish that service, that level of service. And so that's what I wanted to lay out, just so you can understand that we aren't providing a hundred percent service to our community. We're, we are relying on somebody else to provide that.
What you have to work with.
So we're, we're adding one in twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-four is on the staffing plan.
So there's one right now.
Even if you bumped that up to twenty twenty-three, we can't even fill the one position we have right now, so.
We posted twice, I'm optimistic we'll get the one this year filled by the end of this year, because there should be a new class of recruits. And hopefully, if we have something that we can offer as far as competitive wages for the area, we can do good.
Something to chew on.
I think we should try to move up an officer from twenty twenty-four to next year. I think we should move that officer up now. So it gives him, gives Mike an opportunity to figure out how we can do it. And it's also given Travis maybe, you know, some brainstorming how we can try to attract another officer. And, and hopefully, maybe, maybe think, maybe I'm gonna be wrong, and we're not gonna have this issue. But we still, even without it growing, we are just getting by.
In the last six years from two thousand fourteen, we have doubled our actual calls for service.
Hear what you said at the end.
In the last six years, we've almost doubled. Went from fifty-eight hundred to around ten thousand in twenty twenty, twenty-one, had a.
And it's only gonna keep growing.
Yeah, so I would say this is, first, my recommendation would be to stick to twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-eight. I think we came up with that staffing plan five months ago for a reason. Secondly, I can make it work to be in twenty twenty-three, but that's not to say that there won't be an offset. Right now, the market value for twenty twenty-three is up twenty-six percent. That leaves a lot of money out there. The budget that I'll present later shows a one hundred and eighty thousand dollar contribution to fund balance. If we hire another officer in twenty twenty-three and spend one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to do that, and contribute a negligible amount to fund balance in a year when the market value goes up twenty-six percent, at some point, we will have to admit that we are not serious about our fund balance policy. But that does have other implications and future borrowing implications. It also puts at risk the ability to keep the tax rate declining and steady.
What about looking into offering the spot that needs to be filled now? Stick with what you just said, stick to that, that original plan, and look into signing bonuses. What are people offering? Maybe that would help get at least the open spot now filled a little quicker. You know, that'd be obviously a lot cheaper than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I would agree with that.
I'm not, I'm not against waiting till twenty twenty-four either, and I think everybody knows I'm huge on public safety. But I would agree with that, that we could wait for the twenty twenty-four, but what do we have to sweeten this pot now to get him something now?
That's in the budget already.
Yeah, that we can budget and not climb that tax rate that we all stick to.
I, I am a, I am a big fan of meeting the financial goals of the city. I'm also a big fan of meeting the public safety goals of the city. I don't think that it's an either-or. I think that it's absolutely both. I don't think that anybody's gonna care if we have twenty-six officers if the tax rate is through the roof. And I don't think anybody's gonna care if the tax rate is two percent if we have no officers on the road.
Do you think signing bonus would be something we could do?
Yeah, that's a.
I think that anything that impacts wages should be routed through the city attorney, as we are in negotiations currently with the union. And it's possible things may, may change. If that, if council has a recommendation on giving bonuses, is it, I mean, you can let staff know, and I will route that through the city attorney. We haven't done that, to my knowledge, in our city yet, so it'd be.
I'm just saying, hiring bonus. You know, not like performance bonuses throughout the year, at the end of the year, kind of thing for existing employees. I'm just saying, a hiring bonus to sweeten the pot for someone that he feels that's capable of being an officer of the law in our city, so.
Well, I think I'm gonna say negatively on that. How would you feel if they brought somebody else in to your job, company, I know where you work, but I'm just leaving that out, and say, I'm gonna offer you, this guy, ten grand to come work for us, but they said, Dan, you don't get nothing. You gotta play devil's advocate. It's not a great thing. It's not a great thing. You're gonna have pissed off employees.
That's why Josie, I think, is on track with that.
You know, that, that happens.
I just, it's, it's, that's what I'm just saying, you gotta play devil's advocate. Would you care? Maybe not, but the next guy sitting next to you, might.
If that happens every year, guarantee you the starting pay now is higher than when Travis started. And he's probably thinking, man, it'd be nice if I would've got paid that hourly wage when I first started working for the police department.
But then again.
It happens everywhere, all the time.
Wages have gone up since then.
I think, I think we should.
Yeah, but look how many years it took, say, Travis or Jim, whoever.
I think we should, I think we should stick with what Ms. Wood's talking about, and that's, let's, let's let the union negotiations see how that change goes there. And if there's nothing that they could potentially, you know, sweeten the pot and that, then, then maybe we'll talk about it again. But let's see what happens there first.
It's, it's, it's poor timing right now.
It is poor timing.
For a bonus?
Yeah.
When, yeah, when do we hear about what the new union negotiations are going? Is that, do we have a deadline or how's that going?
No, we don't have a deadline. We do have, um, discussions with all three of the unions, um, currently happening in progress now.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have anything, um, we don't have all three of them completed to bring those forward yet.
I mean, when's the contract then? December thirty-first?
December thirty-first on all three contracts, so there's quite a bit of time left.
Wait, okay, yeah.
But they could settle the contract now and agree to it. It it can happen, but it usually goes to the lawyer. Nobody wants to do it any sooner than they have to.
Years past, I think we've done them pretty, pretty early on, but it all depends on how the year goes and how busy everyone's schedules are and such.
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's move on. Do you have anything else you need to add, Ms. Wood?
Yes, I do. Mayor and Council have a couple of items to add. Um, one of them is just an update. I wanted to share with you that uh, the apron out front of the entrance to City Hall here is gonna be replaced. It's been heavily patched because we've had just salt and, um, damage over the years. So they're gonna cut that out with an add-on, uh, add-on to our city street project that, um, there is funds in and was budgeted. That is going to be closed and mean that anyone who needs to access City Hall, we either need to go through the entrance down the alley of the community center or around the alley on the south side of City Hall and come in around as that'll be coned off. Um, right now, we're looking at, we'll post an update on Facebook on the website, but right now, looking at Thursday to Sunday-ish, so the concrete can cure. Um, and then the other item I had, this one's for discussion, just to give staff direction, is uh, with new laws, um, that came about, um, effective Ju- July first from the end of the twenty twenty-two legislative session, um, was some thing added, um, for new edibles and beverages that contain THC products. Um, it was kind of a shock and surprise to a lot of people that this passed, as there was not a lot of provisions put in there. Uh, the Board of Pharmacy, um, Pharmaceuticals is, um, regulating it. However, there were not a lot of things put in place on how for local governments and cities to regulate this, similar to like other things that we have. Um, I know that the Minnesota League, the League of Minnesota Cities is working to help cities know what they, what their options are. My question to all of you this evening is, um, is there any interest in staff doing more research on this? Um, and do we want to even consider, not that we have to, but do we want to research to consider doing regulation like we do with tobacco and alcohol sales? This would be its own category of cannibal, cannaboides?
Cannabis. Cannabis.
Well, we consider cannabis.
Is there any way to stall this so you can do your homework?
Well, I mean, things that to be considered, um, that we would look into at staff would be, um, where should it be sold within the city? Uh, what business is allowed to sell it, the age of the person selling, location of products within retail establishments, pop-up sales, vending machines, distance from other uses, uses such as schools and parks, online sales, whether there should be background checks, um, or even licensing fees.
I think they should set up a booth right next to the school.
If any of those areas are something that council thinks that we may want to consider, not that we would regulate it, but may want to consider, um, if we should regulate it, because right now, it's nowhere in zoning codes. It kind of hit the state by storm and no one had anything in place because we didn't know it was coming down the pipeline. Um, it would be for staff to research, potentially doing a moratorium. There are quite a few statute requirements on whether you can do moratoriums. But that gives staff and the city council up to a year to do their research to determine where they want the regulation to be placed. Um, and doesn't mean you still will go forward with it, but that you are going to look into it further for possible regulation.
Absolutely.
I would do the moratorium.
I'd do the moratorium and let's do the research.
Absolutely.
I think we should be controlling that, just like you do tobacco, alcohol, I think.
Is it, did they set, I never did hear, did they set an age for purchasing?
It's twenty-one, I believe.
Is it? Okay.
Twenty-one.
Which kind of?
Um, but not for selling, like.
Right, someone working the.
You can send somebody to work.
But you could sell, but somebody, do they have to be twenty-one to sell tobacco?
I think it's eighteen to sell tobacco.
I think it's eighteen to sell tobacco with twenty-one to buy. I don't know if there's any age requirements on this, though. I'm not sure.
I think we should research.
There's a lot of unknowns yet. I, staff is just looking.
There's a lot of, yeah, there's, I was just gonna say, there's a lot I'm not sure, so let, let's, let's do our homework and be sure if we can do that moratorium.
I will research on whether we can, I believe we can, but I still need to do even more research on whether we can put the moratorium in place, because this is also new. Um, I'll bring that forward to council for consideration.
I'd be interested if the chief has, uh, an opinion on any of this.
Well, I think the issue we have is, nobody knew that was coming, even the people that voted on that law, so it puts not just us, but everybody's kind of in the same predicament as far as what to do, so.
So you wouldn't disagree with the moratorium, so we could do more?
There's more unknowns than knowns by a long time.
Yeah, okay.
That's what the.
Moratorium's a good idea.
Five, it can, it can contain five percent max of THC.
I don't have any issues with the principle if it went through, but the fact that there is nothing that talks about even how to sell it, right? So is there a possession piece too? They're talking a lot about selling and purchasing of twenty-one and and how that all works, but I think there's too many unknowns.
Yeah, and it can be manufactured in Minnesota or also shipped in from unknown.
If it's been tested by somebody, they don't know who will test, but who keeps track of it? They don't know who keeps track of it, so we're not the only ones that are behind the ball.
I could speak. Um, I am attending, the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce is holding a conference on Thursday, a virtual one, that I'm attending for businesses, which I thought would just be helpful for us also, for those who are selling it, to find out what they're telling them. Um, I believe the league is involved in that also, so I'll get a little more information from that side of.
We just don't have our ducks in a row. I think a mo- moratorium would be perfect. Stall it to give us more time to, to do our, our due diligence and our homework.
The meeting that I attended, um, does anticipate that this will come back through legislation, um, for more regulation, but in the meantime, the state was kind of asking, in the way that they do, um, for local authorities to kind of govern in the meantime, which kind of puts the cities at a, some people say, kind of one of those, well.
Great area, yeah.
You know, and those things that we don't like to hear, because how do you actually get it done without any guidance?
And then, how do you, I, I mean, the chief, on his side of it, he's gotta figure out how he's gonna police it.
Yeah.
How do you?
What's the more important I'm gonna do is?
How do you tell a gummy bear that is a gummy bear from mobile or a gummy bear from someone selling them a five percent THC in it?
And these products aren't new to the world, right? I mean, other states have had them, so we've dealt with this before, and we've even had issues with trying to find a lab that we can send them to, to actually get an analysis, and that's a challenge in itself, I know. And this is, it came out when there was some other stuff, when it was just CBD and some other things, I wanna say four, three, four years ago. Back then, our only option to send us some private lab was like three thousand dollars instead of the BCA. So now the BCA does that test, so I'm assuming at some point, things will catch up, but right now, there's a lot of things that we don't have the ability to do.
All right.
Congressman Burley, what a moratorium does is basically just puts a pause on the whole, um, allowance of it within the city limits. So it, it's, it doesn't say that you can or cannot do it, just says, well, we're gonna wait before we just tell you where you can go, because one of the troubles that you have, no matter what the item is, is, um, or a regulatory item is, if you allow everyone do it and then you take it away, well, that's really tricky for police to police, right, to be able to regulate it at that point when you've let it be a, let it be a free-for-all. Um, so it basically pauses it and says, we're not gonna allow it until we figure out where and how and what and where, um, we can get all the information together.
And they just don't have enough information right now.
Does that put us on any legal bind? I mean, once, once it's passed by the state legislature, does that put us under, I'm just curious about if it causes any legal issues for the city?
No, we would not put ourselves in any legal issues with it. Um, if we're allowed to the moratorium, which I'm, I will need to also research, if we are allowed to do it by state statute, then no, there's no trouble, um, or legal liability on that. Now, if we weren't allowed to by the guidelines of setting a moratorium and then we did it, yes, potentially, but we would not, I would not recommend that if that was the case.
Okay.
You said we can do a moratorium for up to a year, right? So I mean, if we figure it out sooner than that, we can add something.
No, a maximum of a year, right? So you would not go beyond that, because then you're just, it's like you're stalling for businesses and we don't want that. So we would work to get it figured out, and I think the league is hitting this pretty hard. We're gonna have quite a bit of guidance rollout real soon. I don't think it's gonna be that far.
So we can do a moratorium for now, that doesn't mean it's gonna have to last forever.
Right, and council could lift it at any time.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay with doing that until we get our ducks in a row.
I'll bring something forward when I have, um, one drafted.
I mean, uh, just one more quick. Technically, that someone could be selling it right now.
Yes, they could.
Could be.
So. Yeah.
Anything else you got, Ms. Wood?
That is all. Thank you.
Mr. Lundin, you have something?
You know, I kind of got a wild hair. So I've been thinking about, a lot of cities are doing a lot of stuff with trees, you know, promoting residents to plant more trees. You know, in the spring, they come out with, you know what I'm talking about, Matt? They come out with all the, you can order all these trees through whatever, they're, you know, they're bare roots. Is there something that the city can do and maybe we could get, say to residents, hey, we got?
We tried that, did we not? Pretty sure we did. We got turned down, didn't we?
Because the DNR and ICANN can't do it every year.
Yeah, it's, it's, the, the DNR does it, they send out a letter in the mail. If you bought one there before, they'll send out.
And we do it.
Pick out trees, what it'll, takes in, um, like a month or something like that, and you get whatever tree you ordered.
But the problem was, a lot of that was, you had to have such a big order. I couldn't order like ten.
Yeah, it was, I think it was a bundle of twenty or twenty-five.
What did we order, Matt?
I'm sorry, depending on the species of trees, because I've ordered them and I've ordered ten black walnuts for my yard fifteen years ago, and I've done, you can get like a package that might have a couple pine trees, a couple silver maples in it. So you can get different stuff. It's not always a big order, but you can order a big order of trees. We have put in Bluebird Park, and Bluebird Park first got put up, we put a bunch of bare root trees out there.
Didn't we order some for the park in rectus recently, and there was like, we ordered like twenty-five or fifty and they only gave us half of what we wanted? Am I thinking that wrong? I know we ordered some this past year, because we did the order form.
No, we, we have added to the budget to, to buy trees this year.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Bigger trees in the parks, to fill in the parks that the trees have, you know, the bare root trees, the kids have a tendency to break the branches off or a tree doesn't make it, it just, you know, it's.
That happened a lot in Bluebird Park when we first put those in.
Happened a lot in Bluebird Parks. We've ordered, we're planning getting, you know, bigger trees that are gonna, you know, hopefully make it. And they aren't as easy for kids to break the branches off and whatnot on the trees.
But see, if I'm not mistaken, it's not, it, they aren't that expensive when you get the bare roots, trees. And the quantity of is, if we were to say to our residents, you know, we're gonna order a hundred trees. First come, first served, you can have them, but you're only allowed, you know, like three trees per person. And then encourage the residents to planting some extra trees on their properties, because in ten, fifteen years from now, they're gonna have some nice shade in their yard. It's also great for the environment, because plant helps build oxygen, yada, yada, yada.
Do it on Earth Day.
Yeah.
There would be some organization with that as well, because you, you, the trees would have to get half the day, come pick your trees up, here's your window of opportunity, come pick your trees up, because they can't sit in a bucket of whatever for a week or two, so somebody's ready to come get them.
But I mean, that's just a. We, we, we've done a part, though, is my point to you, is we've done it in the past, correct? I mean, we've tried to get all these trees in here and.
I don't recall, I don't recall that. We have planted a nursery years ago that a lot of them trees didn't make it.
Nothing for the public.
We have some, some green ash trees that we can't put in the parks, and they, they're like prime size for the parks, but they can't go in the parks, so there's some of that.
You can do it, like, like you were saying, you could do.
Arbor Day, whatever.
Earth Day.
Earth Day.
Yeah.
You know, because we are a green city.
Right.
They could pick them up at the compost site, you know, limit three trees per family or whatever.
Matt, what's, what's the criteria for going in the park? Why can't a green ash go in? Is it like a?
Emerald Ash Bore.
Yeah, Emerald Ash Bore. Oh, okay. Are there other trees for other reasons, like maybe some type of garbage tree or something that grows too much or moves too much or?
Well, see, that way you could also limit these people getting trees that we only allow for our zoning.
This is, you know, these are the type of trees that we're gonna have available, and that's it.
Mayor and council, if that's something that the council's interested in, I, I think the recommendation from staff might be that, um, if you want to fund that, tell staff what the amount of dollars you want to spend, and we can see how many trees we can buy. I know sometimes we can get a discount through the ICANN County Soil and Waters Conservation District, um, because they do partnerships with different things. I know that they've offered, um, bare root to, species to us at a very discounted price, but they're not the ones that people really want. There's some shrubs and, you know, nothing, no great, great trees per se, but we get those pretty cheap. But if we're looking to buy potentially some specific bare root trees, if you want staff to invest five hundred dollars and then do a first come, first serve and give them away, um, if it's a nominal amount, potentially, we can do that. But we have to be careful of giving gifts, um, to the residents of free trees.
I mean, the city ordinance already requires you to put two in your yard.
Three, I believe, isn't it?
With development, um, new home development.
Two and new development.
Two boulevards and one.
No, it's, you build a brand new house in the city, you have to put two trees in your yard.
Unless you're on a corner street, you have to put three in.
Then, yeah.
Yeah, I had, I'm not, I'm not a corner, but I, when I built over in Rum River, it, I was two boulevard trees and one other tree wherever you want to put it. So it was three.
I only had to do two in mine.
That's changed.
I would think that'd be enough, but that's my opinion.
That was in two thousand and five.
All right, anything else? Before, I do want to mention before media gets here, you guys know what happened with the band on Saturday. Um, we're not gonna mention that. Have we come to that agreement where we've already, Bill Stickle is asking for something and uh, I think he's being nosy, not informative, if you ask me, so.
I think that, um, he was asking if the council was going to be discussing the item at council tonight. And he asked if the, if the band was paid in full or partial, uh, which I did inform him, because it's public information fact that we did pay the band per their contract, which was in full. Um, and then lastly, asked if there was gonna be another band being scheduled, because that one didn't do the full, um, time that we had planned on. If the city would be scheduling and paying for another band, kind of to take the place. Those were his questions. I had informed him at this time, there, there was no direction given for that.
So the band played an hour, then it started to rain and they packed up and left.
By the time they get done packing up, it quit raining.
Yeah, kind of rained. It didn't really.
It didn't really rain. It didn't even get our sidewalks or streets wet.
One, uh, one other thing that I was gonna bring up, uh, was the vendors. I mean, do you think we should take care of them on that? I mean.
The vendors stayed.
Yeah, I know.
All of them. They kept selling.
There wasn't a lot of people there. I don't know, you know, I mean, I just.
I think, you know, I, I think, I think, I think we should go after these people to get half our money back at least, in my business.
It's a free event for the public, so.
Jeff and I were looking at that contract.
They were having, they have a contract, though, and there's no way. We're bound.
And that is, Mayor and Council, that is pretty typical of the band contracts that we see, um, here and other agencies, that it is on their discretion to cancel, and it is up to the band if they want to tar and play through or not. Um, but we do, not in every contract, but it's pretty typical to see that in contract language, that they get the discretion and they still are paid if they have to pack up. Even if they don't come, if the weather would have been showing and they didn't even sign up, typically, um, organizations have to pay, because it was, took their.
That's crazy, which also, good job by the new kid on the block. Jordan was phenomenal that night. Um, I did ask for the contract. Jordan gave me the contract. I read the contract. The contract said if it was hazardous work conditions, they had the right to pull out. I did ask what their hazardous reasoning was. There's lightning over there. That's in Princeton. That's, that's fifteen, twenty miles away, and you, well, that, that's, you know.
I understand they don't want to get.
Radar says this as well, too, and I tried to explain the ICANN vortex, as we all know, because we live here. It, it literally comes at us and then goes around us, or goes beside us, or goes, it, it, it's gonna happen, I guarantee you. Well, it started raining, they packed up, they left. I offered them a secondary location, they refused.
Yeah, what does that mean, secondary location? Did we clarify that with bands or how?
It's in the contract that we had to tell them before, prior to setup.
Oh, prior towards.
So they had us there too. So unfortunately, they have us. So my question is, is, do we keep working with people that have that same language and or contract?
Well, or else.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna shrink our, our.
Or else what we do is we ask them, if it starts to drizzle, what are your plans?
We could, but.
Before we hire them.
We're gonna shorten our choices.
If they say that we're gonna cover it, if it lasts for more than an hour, then we're done. Understandable.
This should be like a timeframe, that, okay, this is the time you have to wait it out or at least give it.
Our choices are gonna get really slim.
But I'll tell you what, I've gone to a lot of places, and it's, you've had a band set up and it started to drizzle, they shut down, everybody kind of dispersed, and they waited it out.
Two years ago, we had a rainstorm where they covered everything with tarps, and Josie and I recalled this. They covered everything with tarps, everybody hung, they hid underneath the canopies along Main Street. It quit. We'll, we'll get, we'll even give it a lot more time than I think. I think it was fifteen minutes, but we'll say a half hour. Soon as it quit, they uncovered and kept playing.
And that's, I guess that's a crucial question, and we'd have to answer the bands.
But it, but if we're gonna change that verbiage, or we're gonna say, okay, we're not gonna deal with those types of peat, that type of promoter anymore, our, our selection's gonna get very tighter, and Jordan's gonna have a heck of a time trying to pick bands out for this.
I got a couple for him to, he can listen to, so.
Either that or we have a secondary location.
Yeah, or perhaps.
We name that ahead of time.
Well, that was. Well, that was part of the reasoning. I tried to tell this council was they should all be in in the park, and we wouldn't be fighting this. But what do I know?
I don't know. It's just to say we have to be there, but I think I think that's something that should be addressed. Okay, you do have a second alternative. So if it is inclement weather, we have another place for you to go. We could have put them in the flipping community center, worst-case scenario.
Well, that used to be the old language, was it not, that that was the secondary location? If it rains, we could put you in the community center. Somebody told me that, wasn't it you?
It was the rodeo grounds was our, they allowed us to be the secondary location, their stage, back in the day.
So now, I mean, we we have this pavilion that we could have used, and we would have never had this argument or discussion.
And Mayor Council, it also was discussed way back in the day that we purchased a covered stage.
That's what I was.
Yeah.
I'm sure you remember, right? And we did look at that.
I think three quarters of that community on Saturday said, why aren't we putting this in the pavilion? All I did was throw my hands up and say, you have to come and talk to the city council. Because I'm not throwing any under the bus, but. So it wouldn't shock me if they came and talked.
Why, with Jimmy, I.
I think the street dance is the street dance. I mean, that's the atmosphere.
I heard the I hear the opposite from people that I know.
You think people wanted that?
This discussion before.
They like it downtown.
People I hear. I don't disagree with that.
Ask the businesses if they like it downtown.
I also think that we should also be using that thing when we have it.
I think it's a secondary spot.
Fifty-fifty, and I think.
But we should have done.
Once they start using that over there, I think they might find it might be just awesome for them to have it there.
What we should have done was two and two.
I agree with that. I don't know how it ended up one and three. I don't even know where that came from.
It don't matter. It's water under the ridge, under the dam, or whatever you want to say.
However, you want to put it.
It's 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 doesn't matter. Dressing at hand, I think I agree with Jimmy. I think we ought to do something for our vendors. Give them fifty percent discount on the next dance or something. It's not their fault.
No, there is a, it does say within their application that is not refundable, but they.
From what I understand, from what Jordan said, you can speak to it.
Yeah, I don't know. Most of the vendors stuck around for the duration. I know the rural loco food truck, they had a line the entire night until we shut down at eleven lines. You guys were serving.
Some people left.
You know, I'm sure they run into that issue, weather. That kills their business more often than.
Plenty of people wanted to stick around, you know, community members were still there, and people were still, you know.
The community reacted beautifully.
It was still a positive overall from the vendors, so.
They were just all.
Disturbed with the band.
I think Josie should have got up there and started singing. I mean, it'd be nice if we had.
I always, for the record, I always bring the party.
I think I think maybe on something like this also is we should maybe look at having some kind of where they, it's not really DJ, but we could play some music. If this ever happened again, they can at least have some music up there.
Which is how the community reacted. They brought out DJ equipment and played their own music, not blocking a street, because that would have been breaking the law, right, Chief? They set it up on a street corner, and and I had, I asked that the stage be removed, because it was a liability that kids or people could be climbing on it and possibly break their arm and by falling or drunken and diving off of it, who knows? But I didn't want that liability, so I asked Jordan, hey, can we, you know, in Public Works, and they were great. Just remove the stage for liability reasons, and we'll let them sit here and listen to music and still visit our vendors. Some vendors left, two of them, I believe, left. The other ones stayed and kept selling. They weren't upset. It does say non-refundable in their contract. I think we're, I don't think, I don't think there's any sore spots there. And I think us to react like that would be, we're giving away free money.
And the fees, I think it's for Iceni, Iceni-based businesses is twenty-five bucks and fifty bucks for non. So it's pretty minimal anyway.
It's not that expensive.
I just thought it'd be a nice gesture as well. Yeah, the money-wise, it's not, it's not probably make or break kind of money, but.
Well, I think I think all of us can agree. I think I don't think we'd ever entertain that band coming back.
I would can wholeheartedly con- concur.
Who was it again?
Sweet Siren. They just, first and last time they're unfortunately been in this city.
I've never heard of them, so.
I didn't think they were that good anyway, so. Quote me on that one. Anything else we have to add?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign. Motion carries five-zero. Therefore, we stand adjourned.